Chairman votes, we're good now.
Okay, I don't know if you heard what I said, Mr. Moore, Commissioner Moore said he can't join the meeting because he doesn't have a link. So maybe you could email him again.
That, yes, we'll do that. We, we sent it to him.
Thank you.
It would appear we lost Commissioner Tufts as well.
What's that? I'm sorry?
I don't think Commissioner Tufts is on here either.
Yeah, she, she's on the phone.
Uh, that's Commissioner Cook. Tufts is not here. I saw him, but he's gone. Oh, I think he's trying to get in. Yeah, he's in.
Yeah, she's three nine seven five, the last four. Dan's here, Coach, Chairman Harvey is here, and I'm here, and we have a quorum. And hopefully, Miss Commissioner Moore can join us. Did you resend the link to him?
It was, it was resent earlier today.
All right, thank you. Okay, all right then. Four thirty-six then, regular meeting, or excuse me, this is the special meeting, which is actually the regular meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Lancaster will please come to work. This meeting is being conducted, excuse me, virtually pursuant to Governor's order N twenty-nine dash twenty. Uh, because this is a telephonic meeting, all votes will be taken by roll call. I'll offer a brief invocation if you would join me in prayer. We're meeting today to conduct the Planning Commission matters and deliberation. Gather hearts and our minds in a spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. Impart your wisdom upon our activities so that our endeavors may reach fair conclusions. We thank you for being our source of guidance today, in his name I pray. Amen. So, you have a roll call, please?
Chairman votes?
You?
Vice Chairperson Smith is excused. Commissioner Cook?
President.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Moore, as we understand, is not here just yet. Commissioner Paris is excused. Commissioner Tufts?
President.
We have a quorum.
All right, thank you. I should have mentioned when we started. The reason Commissioner Vice Chair Smith is not joining us this evening, her father passed away today. And after a brief illness. So now is the time for public business from the floor. Do we have any email communications or speakers regarding public business from the floor?
We do not have any speakers on public business from the floor.
Okay. We have no emails or other communications either?
We do not.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Sorry, Chairman votes, there is a caller on the line.
Okay.
With the last four numbers zero, three, four, two.
Hi, it's Sandy Smith. I just, I'm joining by, that's okay.
It is okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good to have you.
Well, welcome. Commissioner Moore, Commissioner Moore joined us and he's, I think he's talking, but we can't hear you.
We can hear you now.
Now?
Yes.
Sorry about that interruption.
All right, great. All right, we're all here then. All right then. So the, we have two action items. First action item, the minutes of the regular meeting of May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one. It's appropriate to have a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one.
Thank you.
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this matter? Miss Data Cruz?
There are no speakers, Chairman votes.
All right, thank you. All right then, anything further for members? Please call the roll.
Chairman votes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cook?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
President.
I think you mean yes, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Tufts?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Consider one absent, correct?
Correct.
All right then. Uh, the next item is a continued public hearing. This matter has been left open from our previous meeting. This is on tenor track map eight two two four three and conditional use permit twenty dash zero two. Uh, Ms. Swain's the presenter on this, I believe.
Yes. Chairman votes and members of the commission. Last month, you heard the staff report for this mixed-use development consisting of an apartment complex and about thirteen thousand square feet of commercial uses. Staff is still working on addressing the comment letter that was received from the carpenters union and modifying the initial study to expand the discussion on certain areas, and we are requesting that this get continued until July's PC meeting in order to recirculate the initial study.
All right then, thank you. Members, do you have any questions? Comments? None? Do we have any speakers on this item?
There's no speakers on this item.
Nothing? And we have no communication, no written communication, emails or otherwise?
Nothing different from the last meeting.
Just what we have from the last meeting. All right then. All right then, it would be appropriate then to consider a motion to continue this matter till the next regular meeting. Do we we keep the public hearing open on it even though it's going to be re-circulated? All right, we'll do that then. Leave the hearing open and consider a motion to continue to the next regular meeting. Someone?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to continue permit of track map number eight two two four three until July's meeting.
And conditional use permit twenty oh two as well. All right, thank you. I didn't hear who seconded.
This Commissioner Moore.
Oh, thank you. All right then, we have no public comments on this?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right then, please call the roll.
Chairman votes?
Yes.
Chairperson Smith?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cook?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Tufts?
Yes.
Motion carries six one, with one absent.
Thank you. All right then, that brings us to the presentation this evening. Miss Data Cruz?
Yes, I will gladly turn it over to Ms. Campagna, who will provide an overview of what we are hearing this evening. She's, yes, she's there.
Good evening, Chairman votes and members of the planning commission. Tonight's presentation is in regards to the housing element update. So staff and MIG, our consultant, have been diligently working over the past year on a few elements of the general plan. We are working on updating the safety elements, implementing a new element called environmental justice element, and updating the housing elements. We'll get into the details and to the weeds of the safety and the environmental justice element in July's meeting. And tonight, we are solely focusing on the housing element update and providing you with an introduction and an overview of the housing elements. We will have the draft housing element up by this Friday, and it'll be available for public comments, and it'll be online. And we are excited to hear you guys' feedback on it. Um, with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Jenny Bushara with MIG.
All right then, thank you. Welcome.
Good evening or late afternoon, Chairman votes and members of the commission. And I am going to share my screen and get right into this. See. And I'm hoping you can see my screen now.
Yes.
Great. All right, um, so as Cynthia said, I'd like to give you a little bit of an overview today to give you an introduction, set the framework for you as you look over the housing element draft that will be available this week for your review. So this will be a nice framework setting session today to give you some of the, the reasons why we're updating this, this, um, this element and just some of the foundational components of the draft to orient your review as you dig into it. So let's start with just a little bit of a general plan overview, the, the topics on the, the elements that we're updating that Cynthia mentioned. We'll go into all those requirements that the state has for housing elements, because they are many. Um, we'll talk a little bit about the public input that we've received over the last year on the housing element. Um, and then go through what you'll be seeing in that draft element to orient your review. And we'll talk about the timeline of the project and next steps today. So just going back to, to kind of the largest view that we could start at, what is the general plan? What, uh, what are we starting with? So the general plan is a very high poli- high-level policy document, and it sets the framework for the city's decision-making moving forward. It has lots of different chapters or elements that address different topics for the city, um, including land use, housing, circulation, a variety of different topics. Um, and it's really intended to be pretty long-range in scope, um, looking out for about twenty years or so. So the guiding document for the community really, um, as the housing element, it has all these major chapters. So, um, these three highlighted in orange are the ones that we're looking at, that hear, and really focusing in today about the housing element. So what are all these requirements? Um, there are going to be many of them. And so first, tonight, uh, sorry, my, uh, my clicks are a little bit behind. Um, some of the facts. Uh, the housing element is one of the only elements that goes through a really quite extensive review and a certification process by a state agency. It's called the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. And I'll try and leave the alphabet soup to a very minimum of acronyms, but there are a few acronyms that tend to get thrown around a lot with housing elements. Um, HCD is one of them. You'll probably hear RENA, um, and I'll try and make sure that I don't uh, forget to define any of them for you, and I'll limit the alphabet soup as much as I can. So, um, that housing element implements a statewide housing program called the RENA, or the Regional Housing Needs Allocation or Assessment, and we'll discuss that more tonight as well. So the housing element is a unique element of the general plan because much of the housing element is driven by a statewide legislative intent rather than local preference, which much of the rest of the general plan is. The legislature for the housing element has declared that the availability of housing is of vital statewide importance, and that local and state government has a responsibility to facilitate the improvements and development of housing to address housing needs for all different economic segments of the community. The housing element must be updated on a statewide, a state-determined eight-year cycle. So every eight years jurisdictions in different regions throughout the state update their housing elements. If it's adopted on time and the state finds that it's in compliance with all of the state laws that apply to housing elements, the housing element will be valid for eight years. If it's not adopted on time, there are some penalties, including the fact that it would only be valid for four years, and then you'll have to update again four years later. This current, uh, deadline is due to be adopted October fifteenth of this year. And without a state-certified housing element, cities do face, um, some kind of considerations that are, that can be quite serious, including potential litigation, um, either from advocates or from the attorney general. Um, the city becomes ineligible for certain grants and funding, um, and there are penalties in subsequent housing element updates um, where additional housing sites might need to be found. So I'd like to go back and, and give you an overview of everything that we heard from the public as well um, about housing in the community. Because an important component of, um, what HCD reviews too is, is making sure that the, that the city asked the community what are the housing issues and heard from the community. So back in December, we held a workshop, um, and we heard some really key themes from the group, um, about concern about the statewide housing shortage, a need for more affordable housing, um, a need to align the supply with the demand for housing, and understanding the needs of various different special needs populations. Um, and a concern also about, about infrastructure and making sure that the city is planning for appropriate infrastructure to support housing moving forward. So we had a great facilitated discussion from that group and got some really good feedback about what are the major housing issues, along with what are some creative housing solutions, um, we also discussed with that group. The city also, uh, released an online survey to the community to, um, broaden that reach. Uh, this was, of course, occurred all during, um, the COVID pandemic, in which public meetings were not feasible. Uh, so we really wanted to reach out to more folks to get their input about housing issues and concerns in Lancaster. So the, the survey was available online for, um, a little bit over a month, and three hundred and seven residents completed the survey, um, and identified, uh, their top concern as far as looking forward to what they'd like to see the housing element addressed. They really want to make sure that the children that are growing up here in Lancaster can afford to live there when they grow up on their own. Folks talked about different housing opportunities in the survey, um, and placed priority on locating housing in the central core and anywhere that, um, minimal impact to existing neighborhoods would occur. Um, and also thinking about locating housing where it would have easy access to destinations and transit. Uh, when asked about the preferred types of housing, we heard that folks wanted to see more single-family count condos and townhomes, as well as large homes, um, with four or more bedrooms. So understanding all the state requirements and folding in the inputs that we received from the public, the city's preparing this draft housing element that will be available for public review this week. And tonight, hopefully, this, this will provide you a little bit of an orientation to that document. So it, the document, um, is, it's not too short, but it's not too long, hopefully. It has about five main components. The first is the needs assessment, where we look at local population characteristics, the housing needs of, of special needs populations, uh, the local housing market, and establish a baseline for the document. Uh, the second chap, uh, the section, section, uh, the constraint section reviews the city's policies and procedures to identify any ways that the city could be constraining housing development through zoning that's in place or, uh, potential processes that are in place. Um, and it also looks at non-governmental constraints, like the market, to see how that affects demand, supply, and actual construction of housing. The resources and sites inventory chapter, that's chapter five that you'll see, that looks at the RENA, that Regional Housing Needs Allocation, um, and we'll discuss that a little bit more in a few slides. And it looks at where are the available sites around town that are vacant and can support new housing. It also identifies different grants, um, and where administrative resources exist in the, through the city, through other agencies and nonprofit partners. The housing element also re- is required by state laws to look at the previous housing element. So this last housing element that we're currently in that previous cycle went from two thousand and fourteen to the present. And so in this housing element, we have a whole chapter that looks back at that housing element, what the programs were at that time, and what the city progress has been in meeting those programs. So all of these components then come together to build toward the housing plan. That includes the city's housing goals, the policies, and really importantly, what are those implementing actions, those program actions that, um, guide the city forward on a very clear path of, um, implementing the housing goals? So just a couple of key findings from that needs assessment. Um, most housing in Lancaster is single-family, about seventy-two percent. There is slightly more owner than renter households, but it's pretty close. It's almost evenly divided, fifty-three percent ownership and, uh, forty-seven percent renters. We noted an increase in, um, in the housing stock over the last ten or so years of about eighteen hundred units. And we noticed, um, kind of in link with that, uh, percentage of ownership versus renters, the ownership uh, percentage has decreased since nineteen ninety, where sixty-three percent of folks were homeowners. We also note that more than half of households in Lancaster are lower income. So this means that they are earning eighty percent or less of the area median income for the entire Los Angeles County. So that number, um, is not super, super low, um, but it is identified as lower income. Uh, we also noted that over one-third, thirty-nine percent of households in Lancaster are what's called cost burdened by housing. So that means they're spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing costs. And this results in, in lots of impacts, especially for lower-income households. And importantly, sixty percent of lower-income households are overpaying for housing. So because many of these factors are issues throughout the state, the state has developed something called the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, uh, to help address the statewide housing crisis. So the RENA is the number of housing units that the state agency, the housing HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, determines are needed for each region, so on a regional basis. So the state HCD identified this for the Southern California region, um, which includes all the counties in Southern California except for San Diego. And they identified that another one point three four million new housing units are needed in the Southern California region over the next eight years, uh, to address the existing housing crisis. The, then, this also then goes to the local council of governments. So here in Southern California, that's the Southern California Association of Governments, and they then develop a methodology to translate that one point three million out to the various jurisdictions throughout the regional government jurisdiction. So the, uh, allocation identified for Lancaster is nine thousand and twenty-three units, uh, for the next eight years. So each jurisdiction, again, throughout the region, is assigned these allocations. Um, and everyone's going through the same process right now of figuring out what that allocation means, um, as far as where are the sites that could accommodate them and updating their housing elements. Um, so you can see here, um, the, the numbers are, um, fairly consistent with, uh, surrounding jurisdictions of about, about similar size. Um, and the, the methodology does largely link to, um, proximity to transit, transit and services, um, trying to allocate those units towards areas that have more transit and services, um, and away from areas that don't. So the RENA is broken down also by income category. So the state recognizes that not only do we need housing, but we do need more affordable housing. Um, and so there are variations in the income levels of targets for, uh, accommodating those housing units. So, um, the state has identified about, um, three thousand four hundred units are going to be needed in the lower-income category. Um, about thirteen hundred units would be needed in the moderate-income category, and the income ranges associated with those are shown here on the table. Um, so for folks who are of lower income, that's, uh, folks, households that are learning, earning less than sixty-one thousand dollars a year. Um, and then the remaining four thousand two hundred and seventy-seven units, um, are allocated to the above-moderate income category. These are market rate, um, developments. Um, it is important to note that the RENA is not a construction obligation. So the role of the housing element, it's kind of nuanced. It's, it's not to, because the cities, the city does not have the ability, of course, to fund and build this kind of scale of development. The role of the housing element is really to show that the city has in place the zoning that could allow for this kind of development to occur. So, but the city is not required to build these units.
Well, before you go on.
So.
Before you go on. Uh, back up to the previous slide then, please. There you go. So the, um, the, I'm sorry, the previous slide where you're doing the demographic analysis on income level of the population. What's the source of that, uh, research? That SCAG?
For the income ranges associated here?
Yeah, no, the actual income level of folks in the community relative to their housing need. What's the source of that data? Is that something that your firm generated, or is it SCAG?
That is available census data. So that is either, uh, drawn directly from the census or from HUD, because, uh, for HUD, the census develops some special, um, tables that analyze uh, households based on income level. Um, so this likely draws from that, which is called the, the comprehensive housing affordability strategy for CHAZ, but it's, it's census data.
So the data is not, uh, generated by the City of Lancaster. So we are obliged to accept uh, the analysis imposed upon us to factor the needs for housing. Would that be a fair statement?
Yes, so, um, what SCAG has done in allocating out the units by income category, they have taken census data into consideration, um, to, to address this. Um, however, largely within a few percentage points, the breakdown is similar throughout the state, um, with a very significant portion of the units for, for lower-income households.
Unless you live in certain counties of the state where you adopt a housing element and then ha- and do not support it in actual fact of the ability to provide, uh, property, zone property to meet those needs. But that's a discussion for another time. So, the analysis then going forward is to determine whether the community, whether the city has sufficiently zoned property within the city to meet those needs. And the answer is yes, so we can move forward, right?
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
And you're, you're taking away my thunder, yeah.
Right, it's not our first rodeo, that's, you know, okay.
You know, you know this.
I just want to make sure I got the process right and the source of the information. The information is not locally generated. It's an imposed analysis.
Yes, and thank you for that clarification.
So if we want, so if we want to, uh, access certain funds available from the state and federal government, we have to have. certain funds available from the state and federal government, we have to have a provable housing element adopted by the city council. Otherwise, you can't apply, nor will you receive certain allocation of money.
That is correct.
Okay.
And they're all, and new state laws have also imposed, the Attorney General is now suing cities that are out of compliance. There are fines that are potentially going to be imposed on cities on a monthly base, I think it's weekly, monthly, tens of thousands of dollars of fines that the Attorney General now has the ability to impose on cities that do not comply with how the element law.
Good luck Attorney General, what a waste of resources. I'll be quiet, go ahead.
So looking at achieving that RENA and showing to the state that we do have adequate capacity within the city of Lancaster under existing zoning and general plan designations, there's kind of a three-step process that we go through in, in showing how we achieve the RENA. So we look first at housing units that are approved but haven't yet completed with construction. So the, the housing element period, although it's due on October fifteenth, the RENA itself starts July first. So anything that gets its construction permit, sorry, its certificate of occupancy after July first of twenty-twenty-one, we're looking at counting towards the next future RENA. So that's the first step that we look at. Those are the, the approved housing projects that either are just approved with entitlements or they actually have building permits, are under construction, and all in the pipeline. The second piece is projects that are currently proposed. So we have some kind of certainty that there is strong developer interest about those sites. We know the number of housing units that they want to put on those sites. Although they're not approved, those are included in the, in the analysis too. So that's kind of our second stage is looking at those proposed projects. And then finally, we look for sites. We look for, we look for vacant sites throughout town. Ideally some with higher density, and we'll go into the reason for that as well a little bit. And we also think about accessory dwelling units as a projection based on previous track records that the city has experienced for the construction of accessory dwelling units. So looking at approved and proposed projects that are currently in the pipeline, the city is able to meet a significant portion of the RENA. So, and these numbers aren't quite final. We have a little bit of noodling with the numbers to do to address projects that have been withdrawn and just make sure these numbers are a hundred percent accurate. So in the final draft, they look just very slightly different, but they're very quite close. So looking at the, the total number of approved, approved projects, there's a variety of different approvals that are included in this category. Tracks that are partially constructed or tracks that have yet to start construction. There's approved tentative maps. There are ADUs that are currently proposed on approved tentative, on approved tracks. And there are some approved multifamily projects that are currently either awaiting building permit or under construction in the process. So those approved projects actually show that you can meet over six thousand of units towards your RENA goal. Adding to that, proposed projects, tentative maps in review, and multifamily map projects in review, you can achieve another twenty-five hundred units through that, through that category. And here, we are, we're able to count towards the various income categories based on what those projects are proposing. So projects that are, have, there are some affordable housing projects that are included in here as well. And we're also able to count some of the, the existing proposed projects based on their potential market rates. They fall, they some, some of them fall into the categories of affordable or moderate income households just based on how much folks are planning to rent those for. So with the remaining RENA, this slide kind of summarizes that you can meet a very significant portion of your RENA just with those projects under construction or proposed. So the remaining RENA after projects is just a hundred and five in the total, but we do have to meet them by income category. So it's actually the extremely low, very low and low income, about less than fourteen hundred units to achieve through, through the either identification of sites or ADU projections. So we've projected out the anticipated ADUs. So this is based on a track record of the city's receipt of applications for ADUs either on infill sites around town or in tandem with, with tracks. So for those tracks that are proposing ADUs within them, consistent with, with revised state law, which now allows for that. So with that, the remaining RENA has reduced significantly. So that just leaves us with the need to identify some sites, not nearly nine thousand anymore, but we do need to identify some sites. So how do we pick those sites that show that they can support housing that is affordable to all different income types? So the, when the state reviews the housing element, they, they take a very close look at this section in particular, and they want to look at those sites to make sure that they have adequate zoning in place. So they look at what is the existing use on the site, if it is not vacant? What's the realistic potential for development? How does that site ownership play into it? And importantly, what is the development density? So the allowed development density is important because it's linked to the analysis that shows how a jurisdiction can meet that lower income RENA. The legislation has assumed that there are economies of scale that are associated with higher density. So those economies of scale can help affordable housing be developed. So because you're able to get more units, you're able to spread that cost of potential affordable housing out across more units, thus being able to build more affordable housing. So in the housing element, where how, where higher density sites are identified, they're assumed to be able to meet the lower income RENA. And in general, that level is throughout the state, for, for most jurisdictions, it's identified at thirty units to the acre. So with those parameters in place and looking for the sites, we found additional sites in town, vacant HDR, vacant mixed-use corridor sites that can accommodate the, the remaining RENA. And so with the, with all of that information, we're able to complete the algebraic equation to show the state that we do have adequate space in Lancaster to support a variety of different housing types and income levels with a surplus. So it's important to note that a recent state law has changed to really make it quite imperative to have a surplus of sites identified because the city is required to track the sites throughout the planning period to ensure what's called no net loss. So no net loss means that throughout the planning period, if a project is proposed on any of the sites identified in the housing element, for instance, on a mixed-use site if commercials are proposed instead, or if on a site that we've identified could accommodate lower income housing, a market rate project is proposed instead. The city has to show that there are adequate other sites throughout the planning period to accommodate that, that loss of that site. So it's important to have somewhat of a surplus identified, especially towards that lower income category. So we've identified that in the, in the housing element. And we've also identified that there's, there's other available vacant land that can fully accommodate lower income housing as well. And so these are included as general areas and included in the housing element as kind of backup sites that the city can identify to meet that no net loss provision of state law. And the city, of course, has also recently adopted or is currently considering specific plans, the Park Village specific plan, the recently adopted Health District Master Plan that also provide additional capacity for various types of housing in Lancaster. The housing element also includes a new provision for what's called affirmatively furthering fair housing. So affirmatively furthering fair housing means making meaningful actions to address existing disparities in housing needs and opportunity areas. So the housing element includes a significant section in the constraint section, as well as looking at the sites to make sure that sites are identified throughout town in areas that are not just what's called low resource areas, that sites are identified in areas that have access to good schools and resources that have been identified to, to lead to positive health outcomes for folks. So we've included that analysis in the housing element as well. So, and looking through the, the various sites around town, you can see the, the, the different colors show different, what's identified as high and medium and lower resource areas. And this is something that's been developed by the state. So that's kind of an aggregate analysis developed by the state for all jurisdictions and looking at, at those sites throughout town. And we'll be adding to this to include all the proposed projects and approved projects in a final version of the map. So now the housing plan, the heart of the document. There are five main housing goals. These are largely set also by the state. The first goal is to promote a variety of housing types. The second is to meet the needs of low and moderate income households and, and special needs households. The third is to look at the existing housing stock and efforts to preserve it, especially affordable housing. The fourth is to remove government constraints wherever possible. And the fifth is to provide fair housing opportunities for all residents. So when we looked at updating this housing element, we looked to revise and update the programs to clean up, to streamline the process for staff review moving forward, eliminate programs that are everyday activities to, to make it more streamlined, and to add programs that address some of the identified constraints that were found in the constraints analysis, and respond to new state laws. The state legislature has passed many laws in, in recent years. So we've identified programs that the city can implement to comply with those state laws. So of the first goal, here we're outlining just a few of the notable programs and, under each of these goals. The first goal is to promote, again, to promote a variety of housing types. The first program is to make sure that we have adequate sites. So this is a requirement of state law to make sure that we can meet the RENA. And it's really a, a program that says the city will maintain that inventory and comply with state law. We also have a program to address that no net loss provision of state law that I addressed where the city has to, if any sites are proposed to be developed with units that are not lower income on sites that were identified that could accommodate lower income or some other uses proposed on those sites, that the city tracks that and make sure that, that, that we can make the findings that are required by state law to show that there are actually adequate other sites that can meet the RENA. We also have a program to comply with state law for accessory dwelling units because that is a component of the site's inventory as well. Goal two is to meet the needs of low and moderate income and special needs households. Here, along with encouraging partnerships with nonprofits and other housing providers, some of the notable programs include implementing the twenty-eighteen homelessness plan and continuing to participate with the Antelope Valley Homeless Coalition. Another program is pertaining to housing choice vouchers, or formerly called Section Eight, to encourage landlords to accept Section Eight, which is consistent with state law. Folks can't discriminate based on income source. We also, to further encourage flexibility within the HDR zone and, and other commercial zones where high-density residential is, is allowed, we have a program to establish a new density overlay that can be applied for, as a discretionary action to allow for additional density on a project-specific basis. Goal three is to preserve that existing housing stock. So one of the key requirements, again, of state law is that where the city has existing affordable housing that could have an expiring affordability covenant on it, that the city tracks that and presents the owners with various options for preservation as affordable, either through partnerships or through a variety of different mechanisms, and complying with state law with regard to notification to existing tenants. The city also has a program to encourage homeownership assistance and to really link folks who are interested in, in first-time homebuyer programs with the available resources that are provided by the county and by HUD. We also have a program for energy conservation to encourage energy-efficient design and conservation. Goal four is about removing constraints. And so this is where many of the programs live, and a few of the notable ones. The first is to periodically assess the new impact fees that we just, this past spring adopted to assess how successful those are in really meeting the city's targets to encourage housing in infill locations and to assess the impacts associated with the new fee. We also have a program to look at the existing mixed-use zones to try to streamline. The city's seen a few projects recently in the mixed-use zones, but hasn't seen a ton of projects in the past. So looking at ways to really streamline that, that zoning, the zoning development standards and eliminate some of the factors that might be constraining development. Some of the components have been identified as a little confusing. So looking at that as ways to make it as user-friendly as possible and consider removing or changing some of the requirements about where required commercial must be in relation to where a project is located, whether or not they're on an arterial street. The density bonus program states that the city will update the, the density bonus to match what it says in state law. Of course, the city is complying with state law, but it's nice to have it paralleled in the city's municipal code just for ease and use. There's also a provision about the Housing Accountability Act. So this is, there were changes to the Housing Accountability Act in recent past that makes it very clear that cities cannot deny or reduce the density of projects that are residential or two-thirds mixed-use, or two-thirds residential in a mixed-use project. So they cannot be denied or you, or reduced the density. So in order to facilitate that, the program also includes the factor that the city would adopt objective design standards so that you can ensure quality design, compatible development standards, and kind of think through some of those conditions at the forefront to comply with the Housing Accountability Act. And the State Employee Housing Act, this is generally intended for farmworker housing, but applies to all employee housing, that housing that is for thirty-six beds in a kind of dormitory setting or twelve units that is accommodating farmworker housing has to be treated as an agricultural use. So just updating the city's code to comply with that law. And then there are two new laws for special needs housing that there are programs that state for the city will modify the zoning ordinance to make it clear. So the first is with regard to supportive housing, which needs to be allowed as a use by right wherever residential is allowed, and it has some streamlining provisions to it as well. And then AB one oh one also requires that low barrier navigation centers. So these are homeless shelters, emergency shelters that have low barrier to entry in that folks could bring their, their pets and their family. So that those types of emergency shelters are also required to be a use by right in non-residential and mixed-use zones. So these are state laws that are required for every jurisdiction throughout the state, and we want to make sure that it's clear also in the city's code. And then finally, goal five is about affirmatively furthering fair housing to continue to coordinate with the Housing Rights Center, which is the provider of fair housing services throughout the county, and to really just make that effort to affirmatively further fair housing throughout, throughout the city. So looking at the timeline, so where we are today is the, a little orange box. We hope that this meeting provided a strong overview, overview for you to begin your review of the draft document that will be available for public review. begin your review of the draft document that will be available for public review this week. We'll also have an online comment form for folks to weigh in on the on the housing element. And we're looking forward to meeting with you again in a month to review any comments that you might have on the draft and also at that meeting to discuss the safety element and environmental justice element as well. So during the summer, we'll also have the state HCD review the draft housing element. They do get 60 days to review the draft and do require that that happens before adoption. So during that time, we'll also be doing environmental analysis. The housing element is considered a project under CEQA. And then planning commission hearings are anticipated in September to consider these general plan amendments. And again, the state deadline for adoption is October 15th of 2021. So thank you so much for for letting me provide this overview, and I'm happy to answer any questions or comments that you might have.
Thank you. I'm not, I don't know if members have any questions or comments at this point since we hadn't seen this in advance. The CEQA matter. Does this have to be circulated as a project under CEQA in August? Prior to the state review?
It will be, the environmental review will happen concurrently with state review. So the initial study will go out for for public circulation during that same time period.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right then, no questions or comments, anything further from staff?
No, nothing.
No. Okay.
Just to add, if I can add one thing, just logistics purposes. Once the document is ready for public review, we will send out an email link to the commission so that you all have direct access to it. If anybody wants a printed copy, we would be more than happy to to provide you with a printed copy. We'll we'll coordinate that with you. There's, there's quite a bit to read. We would ask that you spend the next several weeks in in reading it, digesting it. That way, we can have a productive meeting in in July.
What I'm really looking forward to reading is those nifty new state laws imposed upon the majority of the state, a portion of which is ignored by certain portions of governments in other jurisdictions. As I can, as near as I can tell, we comply with all of them, don't we?
We typically do.
Very good. All right, we look forward to getting it. Thanks, Ms. Charle. It's Charle, right? Did I say that right?
Charo.
All right, thank you very much. Appreciate your diligence on this. We look forward to seeing you again and getting to the end of the process.
Likewise, thank you so much for your time.
All right then, anything further? Ms. Taylor Cruz, do you have any, oh, we should, no, I'm sorry, we need to ask for public comments on this last presentation, if there are any from the public.
It doesn't appear that we have any members of the public on this call.
All right, thank you.
If I could just add one, one comment to this chairman votes. Our intentions are that we have an item on each agenda for this item. In the event that the public or a member of the commission wishes to speak on it, we have the opportunity to have it on the agenda so we can, we can have a conversation if necessary.
As a continuing item then?
Correct.
Great. So once we get the the draft, we don't have to wait till the next public hearing. In effect, we can share our comments either individually or as a group.
Correct.
And I'm assuming you prefer to have comments sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Shaking her head violently over there, I guess. All right, very good. All right then. Did you have any other announcements this evening, Ms. Taylor Cruz?
Yes, we hopefully, this is our last Zoom call. The, yes, I, we are. Our life is going back to normal. Tomorrow, we'll know a little bit more. Well, we already know some of what what is going to occur in, you know, public places. We'll get some more definitive answers tomorrow, hopefully. But this does mean that we should be able to go back to in-person meetings starting July. So we're gearing up for agenda review in person. Because we have housing element going on concurrently and it's it's tied to timelines, we may end up having two meetings where we have agenda review specific to housing element, and we have the regular meeting time slots specific to development applications. So we may need to need to take advantage of the two meetings and have them be independent of one another. Just again, just because we're up against a timeline with the housing element effort, we just want to make sure that we give you all enough inadequate time to review and provide your comments as well as keep the other development applications going and moving, and we don't hold anybody up, and we don't hold ourselves up. So we'll keep you all posted on on what that looks like. It'll be meeting overload. But it's for an important, important items. So that's all, that's all I have this evening. Just a huge thank you to MIG and to Cynthia Campagna and Jocelyn Swain for spearheading this effort. This is, this is not an easy task. Cities are dealing with this all over the county, and it is, it is definitely in addition to and not to interfere with current workload. So I just want to thank them for all of their efforts and what they do each and every day. And that's all.
Very good. Thank you very much. And the fairy dust will be floating around tomorrow. It's actually started over the weekend and from Sacramento. It takes a little while for it to come south. But the fairy dust will be falling all over us, and we will be meeting in person just like the city council did last week. I was assured that there are no barriers, at least for the commission staff. Publicly, that's anybody's guess, I guess, at this point. At any rate, you don't have to wear a mask because the fairy dust will impregnate you no matter where you are. So be ready. All right, once around the table, anybody else have any comments before we close the meeting? No? All right, it's appropriate then to ask for public comments on non-agendized items. Do we have any public comments on those?
We do not have any emailed comments, and it does not appear that there are any others on the line either.
All right. Perfect. All right then. Then we will adjourn in memory of Ellis Grove, former captain of the California Highway Patrol here in Lancaster, the father of Sandy Smith, who's with us this evening. He's a special guy, that's for sure. We will adjourn to our special meeting of July 12th, 2021 at 4:30 PM. And we're assuming it'll be in the council chambers. Appreciate all your effort tonight, and thank you again, Ms. Char, for the excellent presentation. Bye at all.
Good night.